Good evening, I'd like to call the main order, roll call please.
Mrs. Mastelli?
Here.
Mrs. Billings will be absent from workshop this evening. Mr. Sirianni?
Yeah.
Dr. Selly?
Yes, here.
Mr. Pallone?
Here.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Okay, so tonight we have three items on the agenda. Property tax reward program discussion, or presentation I should say, with Mr. Carmine DeFalco, surcharge fees with Director Hayes and finance director Martin, and review of the regular meeting agenda. So, I'd like to get started with Mr. DeFalco, who runs a property tax reward program throughout the state. I first met Mr. DeFalco, come on up sir please.
Thank you.
At the municipalities convention back in 2011. At the time, he was just starting with the property tax reward program with Marlboro Township, I believe. Since then, 23 municipalities now participate in the program, I guess more possibly on the way. About a month ago, I asked Mr. DeFalco if he'd make a presentation to the council just describing what the program's about and how it works, and he's here with us today. I want to add that I also personally spoke with mayors Chris Siciliano of Ocean Township and Mayor John Hornick of Marlboro, they're two communities that participated in the program. Both mayors had several positive things to say, described the program as a win-win for everyone involved. And lastly, I also want to mention, which I'm sure Mr. DeFalco would not mention, is that in 2015, Harvard University Kennedy School of Government, Kennedy School of Government, named Marlboro Township in the Property Tax Reward Program, a recipient of their national top 25 finalists in innovation and government awards. So, Mr. DeFalco, welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Council President, and thank you very much for inviting me tonight to speak. I'd like to just distribute these. My name is Carmine DeFalco, I'm with Fin Credit Inc. Fin Credit is the administrator of the Property Tax Reward Program. We started the program five years ago in Marlboro, New Jersey, and today we are in 23 townships, and we have two other townships which we hope to close by the end of the year. The way the program works is very simple. The city will issue these type of cards, these are regular swipe cards to the entire community, and people register online, and when they shop in town, a participating retailer's, a percentage of the sale, whatever the retailer wants to give back, goes back to this person's property tax bill. So, the more I shop in my own town and I swipe my card, the more property tax cards I earn. So, let's say you go out to a restaurant that provides a 10% reward for shopping there. You will pay normally cash or credit, then you give them the reward card. The reward card is processed online or in a machine that we provide, and $10 is then given back on the card. Fast forward to the third quarter tax bill, we send to the township a payment file with all the block and lots and all the credit that each block and lot has earned, and of course with the payment attached to it. And on the third quarter tax bill, all the residents are going to see exactly how much they've earned on their tax bill as a credit. During the course of the year, each resident that participates can also login into our web portal and check exactly how much they've earned and how much they've accumulated over the course of three, four, five months or the full year. So, they can really check their credits.
Let me ask you one. So, you send a check, what would the amount? I mean, I understand the percentage, but what would the normal amount be?
So...
I think our tax collection, like, Charlotte's not here, she only takes full payments, and most mortgage payments include the tax payment. So, how do you, say you send $200 for my first quarter payment, and I've already paid, where is the money?
Right, so, we send the money once a year in August for the benefit of the third quarter tax bill. We hit the account before the bills go out. The bills go out once a year to the mortgage companies. So, we hit that account right before it goes out to the mortgage companies. Now, if you're a mortgage company, you're going to see just the bottom line that you need to escrow for.
We would then, say your tax bill was 10 grand, and you sent 800 bucks, they would send that bill to the mortgage company.
That is correct. That is correct. That's how it shows on the tax bill. So, they get the bill, they escrow against the $92.
The mortgage company then is only dealing with paying...
$9200, I suppose.
Who's part of it?
That is correct. That is correct. So, the credits come from the merchants, so there is zero cost to the city. We do expect the city to do marketing for their community or for their businesses, and by marketing, I mean really a lot of social media, maybe a few page paper ads in a year to the local papers, so nothing too expensive. And usually, the townships do it through their economic development commissions that they have, committees that they have. The merchants like the program because it increased their visibility and it increases, hopefully, their traffic. What can people earn? If you just go out by your business and just use it once in a while, you can easily earn a couple hundred dollars on your property taxes. I happen to focus on the property tax. I live in Marlboro, I'm usually between $500 and $700 a year in property tax credits. I've seen people earning thousands of dollars if they do a capital expenditure and they have maybe a construction company that participates in the program. So, it's really, all of it depends, like anything else, how much you use it. That's really, in a nutshell, how the program works.
Can a non-resident buy a card and credit a city, a relative, a friend?
Right. So, here's how it works. Thank you for bringing it up. I didn't get to the point, but renters and out-of-towners, people that work in town and don't necessarily live in town, they can also get a card. They don't pay property taxes, so they'll receive a rebate check from us at the end of the year. Around the same time where we send the money to the township, we send a bunch of checks out to the people that do not have property in town. See, the idea is, keep the people in town at the end of the day. Don't let them go home. They want to spend the money, right? You should allow them to spend money right here and give them something back. That's the entire premise of the program. We have a township down south that is probably going to do the program. They said to me, "Carmine, we did a study that we're losing $20,000 per household to the next town's over. If your programs help us to keep 1% or 2% of their money in town, that's a great program for us." And obviously, it's not going to resolve all the problems of a town, but it's definitely a step in the right direction, we believe. Now, the cost of the program, you would have to purchase the card, but in all of the cases that we have, in all 23 cases, they have a sponsor which put the card hatched in the back. They put their logo in the back. In most cases, we have the bank where the city or the town keeps their money to sponsor the cards. The cards are a dollar a piece, and they come up with the money for their marketing in the back of the card.
So, what do you estimate for long range?
Well, I mean, what are the population? You have a pretty...
31,000.
How many?
31,000.
So, 31,000. So, you have approximately 8,000 households, so I would say about 12,000 to 13,000 cards. You want some inventory, people can actually have multiple ones, you know, for your children, for your wife, whatever, so that needs to be accounted. And you want a few thousand as inventory as well. So...
Mr. DeFalco, did you say in all 23 communities then that you've been involved in, they have found the sponsor to pay for the card?
That is correct.
So, you haven't heard anyone who's having difficulty finding that yet?
We have. That town I was studying you before, in South Jersey, is looking for a sponsor for a long time, unfortunately, they're not finding one, but in all of our cases, they don't seem to have a problem. Usually, it's the bank where they keep their funds, they usually step up to the plate.
If there's no sponsor, the individual who buys the card would pay...
There's not, the card is free to the residents.
And they're talking about the sponsor, the production of the card?
Yeah, but if there's no sponsor...
They're not, they're not, there's somebody else between them and them, they don't get involved with selling their cards.
There's no sponsor, the city pays.
Then the city would pay.
Yeah.
If you do not have a sponsor and you decide to do the program anyway, then someone has to pay for it, yes.
Yes.
We don't have a single instance where the city paid. One instance is maybe Union, they had a sit, and the sit picked up the tab for it because they had budget. And actually, got a couple thousand dollars from the investors' bank on top of that.
Who's the representative, and is there a department in the cities that you've been dealing with that spearheads and coordinates?
The economic development. Most towns have an economic development committee and executive director. We expect the town, we are not from town, and we cannot be here all the time. I would assign somebody to you for the beginning to get the first 15 or 20 merchants, but we need one person in town to champion the program.
Then how do you make money off of this?
Well, we keep 25% of the actual reward. So, if a restaurant gives $10 back, we'll credit $7.50 and we keep $2.50. We only advertise to the public the net that they're getting, so there is no confusion. For full transparency, we put like a little line on our website saying, "The merchant pays a little bit more to cover program expenses."
And then, the machinery. It says, "No cost if transactions are processed online. If a terminal is required, it's $160 for a dial-up terminal and $10 a month." That's the...
Yes, the cost of the merchant is $10 a month. If he inputs transactions online, there's no need for them to buy the machines. The machine, if they want to purchase a machine, it's $160 for a dial-up machine and $230 for an internet machine.
So, the machines are typically for high-volume businesses?
That is correct.
As opposed to...
A construction company does not need a machine.
Somebody that isn't...
Pizza real?
A pizza real would need it, probably.
Someone that's not computer savvy or has computers, I mean, your mom, pop-up, or I came from a mom-pop.
Yeah.
Back then, we didn't even know what the word "computer" meant.
A business, a business usually, yeah, well, a business usually, they will know a little bit about, I mean, we never had that problem, that's really a non-issue.
It's basically functioning as a credit card transaction?
That's correct. In a way, yes. It's only that it's a reward. Yes, the terminal is exactly a credit card terminal. It's like a desktop, you've seen them around, they're all over the place. In fact, some of the merchants have some older machines that they give to us, and we kind of recondition them to work with our program and send it back to them. In that case, it's only like a $40 program fee.
All right, so then, at that time of the month, at that time of the year, you said August, that's when the...
We send the money, we send the money in June.
In June?
Our cutoff period is, our fiscal year is May 1st, April 30th, that's our cutoff date. Then we tally everything and we send the money to the township or the city around June 1st.
How much money do you need generally, like, in Marlboro, how much money do you need?
In Marlboro, usually, it's about $50,000 in tax credits with a revenue, a revenue of about $700,000 a year, revenue utilizing the card. In other words, sales, merchant sales. So, that's pretty much, our most successful town is Brick Township. They have over a million in sales and about $60,000 to $70,000 in tax credits. They're a larger town.
They have a lot of retails.
They have a lot of retails, we have about 40, 50.
Yeah.
And, okay, so with this program, on June 1st, you send out a check, and along with that, you send out a spreadsheet?
A payment file. A payment file, just like a...
And then the tax collector is responsible to credit from like 12,000 back...
It comes, they send an electronic file which feeds directly into our computer system.
Yes.
Yes. All the banks do the same thing.
Just to put things in perspective, your tax department processes thousands of payment files, we're just going to give them one. It's going to take them about three minutes to just press a button and all the block and lots are credited, just like a mortgage company will send the mortgage, the taxes for their clients.
And how do you handle returns?
Okay, so...
What if it happens on, let's say, June 1st? You have a whole bunch of returns. How does that handle, how do you handle that?
Okay, so, we can handle that as well. I got to tell you that that has never happened, we have about 700 merchants, and it's never happened that exactly on 4/30, the last day, the next day on May 1st, people return something, so now we have to go back. But, we always set the merchants, if you have that, it's in terms and conditions, by the way, if you have that, you only do a return. If you use the card and it's credited, you only do return. In other words, you don't do exchange. You don't do a return on the, you know what I mean, on the credit card.
You do exchange on...
Yeah, the exchange does as a zero effect because you've already been credited. But that has never happened in five years we've been in business.
How do you contract it with them? Are you a bidable item or a...
We are the only company that does loyalty program, a property tax reward program, which is a loyalty program. There is another company out of Texas that do like a debit card where you have to put a hundred dollars and give you like a quarter of a percent. It's a little bit different than us, but we are the only one that does it. So, we only do it by resolution. Some towns have done it by ordinance, where they do a bid situation, nobody bids on it, just us.
So, we would need, if we're interested, we would need to create a series of specs, set it up for a bid, and then yours...
If you want to do the bid, but it's really, no other town has done, has went through a bid situation.
Do you have form...
It's all source.
Do you have form resolutions?
Absolutely.
So, if we had the form resolutions, we could...
Tailor it.
Tailor it, we could look at it, and to me, the key is to getting merchants to sign on to this program. And the more merchants you get, the more high-end merchants you get, the better it is, and the more credits are going to be given.
So, whose responsibility is that?
It's ours.
The city's responsibility to solution the merchants?
You have an economic development area, I believe. I believe you have, not the Chamber of Commerce, you have actually an economic development, if I remember correctly. That would probably be the natural body to handle this. We do require, we would like to have at least one person in town, maybe somebody who's, you know, who's really known in town to be the person in charge of the program, hopefully an employee, they can dedicate two, three hours a week, no more than that, because that's all you need, just to go out with us, at the beginning anyway, to talk to the merchants, to explain the program and everything. We are doing a program right now, Washington Township, they gave us two employees, and they're talking to all the merchants, and it does not take them long. Like I said, two, three hours a week, that's sufficient to handle the program.
And Mr. DeFalco mentioned, as you've mentioned to me, how it's sort of, it works for the whole city as well in the sense that if you do have somebody who go out periodically, it brings the business and the city and the residents all sort of together, because it gets an opportunity for that individual to meet one-on-one with the businesses and see what's going on, and...
Absolutely, absolutely. What I found is that townships today are changing, and I'm sure you guys can tell me that yourself. I mean, they're no longer just fixing roads and things like that, they need to be close to their community, and merchants are the most, businesses are the most important asset of a community, so you want to be close to your businesses, and this is a way of doing that. One thing that we do when we launch the program, we might hold the businesses to Town Hall, and the mayor or the council president or somebody says a few words, and everybody starts understanding how the program works, and the idea is to put it, to bring, like you said, Mr. President, to put everybody together. And if I have, this is a window cling, okay, that people put on their windows. If you scan this, you have all the merchants that participate. So, my customers can easily become your customer, and these customers, and your customer. That's the idea. The idea is to bring everybody together, because now the businesses work for everybody else as well. It's a way to bring everybody together. It's a loyalty program for the city, not just for one. Right now, what you have, you have loyalty programs for Starbucks, which is a separate loyalty program from Dunkin' Donuts. This loyalty program will be for all the mom and pops, and everybody that cannot afford a loyalty program, which is thousands of dollars a month, by the way. And that's the reason why the big guys all have loyalty programs and the small guys don't. So, that's a way of helping everybody, I think.
Any other, any other stress on city staff or monetary costs involved with the city, or is that part of the fee that...
Well, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. What we do, we try to play our part by handling the Facebook of the, of Shop Long Branch, let's say. We send out coupon blast, email blasts, and coupons at the end of the month. We send out a coupon every month, meet the merchant. So, on a rotational, rotating base, we feature a merchant, so we bring him closer to the community. Say you have a restaurant, we want to bring you closer, maybe they don't know your story, tell us your story, we'll send out an email blast to everybody that participates, and we would do that once a month. So, every month, we feature a different merchant. So, we do our part. We expect the township, maybe through the economic development or through that person who's in charge, to actually help in the same thing. We'll find other ways.
Not that I'm a doubting Thomas or anything, but it's my job, so please put this in context.
June, I'm sorry.
The dollars that you are collecting, how do we know as a city, and how do I keep my job, if the money disappears? What guarantee do we have that there will be a full accounting of the dollars that pass through the program, so that in April or June, whenever you make the disbursement, that the monies are there to make the disbursement?
That's actually a very good point, and I'm not offended at all because I hear every meeting I go, so...
I didn't do the defense at all.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I'm actually, I'm actually pleased you came up with that, because usually, it comes up in a meeting. So, we would open a dedicated account. One thing that we do, we do not commingle funds. So, unfortunately or fortunately for the township, but unfortunately for us, we have 23 accounts, and every account is basically for the township. We can send monthly statements, or if you prefer, you can open an account, you meaning the township can open an account, and we can funnel, we can send the money every week, because we debit the accounts of the merchants every week and a Tuesday. We do that by design because unfortunately, businesses do go out of business, so we want to make sure that the user gets their credit as much as possible.
Do you give the city a bond?
No. We started that one time at the beginning with Marlboro Township, because it was new, they were nervous, but now we have 23 townships and we even took it away from Marlboro.
If John Hornick gets nervous, I get nervous.
John Hornick is not, is not nervous at all. He's a good friend and a good person, and he will vouch for the program like he already has.
Mr. DeFalco, has anybody, has any municipality dropped out of the program?
No. They have not dropped out of the program, although this is a program you have to work on. You cannot just take the program, put it in a corner, and thinking that, oh, it's going to work itself out. So, I do have some programs...
It's a business within the business.
It is, absolutely.
It needs someone who's going to be dedicated to it.
Absolutely.
Maybe a little bit more than two, and there's constantly businesses open, so you constantly have to be out knocking on doors. It is something that's going to, I don't know, I questioned, you said two hours a week, I don't know, maybe more, just to keep the public relations and the word out there. It sounds like a nice program, but we would have to make sure if we commit this, that we have somebody that is good at...
I agree with you, and we have, in the contract, in the contracts that we will be signing with the city as well as with the merchants, there is no obligation to stay for any extended period of time on both sides. We have only a very simple rule, we work by, with the merchants and the township. If people don't want to work with us, it's okay. Life, life is beautiful as it is, we don't need to work with each other, we just have to like each other. And at the end of the day, if a merchant doesn't want to work with us, they just send us an email, we take them out. So, there is no obligation one year to, and same thing with the township.
Is there a financial obligation, other than a sponsor for the cards, is there any other financial obligation for the city?
Only marketing. We like to see as much marketing as possible. If you say, hey, I got a social media company that works on that, and we pay them, that would be great. Facebook, social media, Twitter, whatever you guys should already have in place, frankly. I don't know if you do.
How about the merchant that the city solicits? Whether it be a restaurant, whether it be a nail salon, or a barber shop, or whatever it may be, is there a financial obligation on their behalf that we have to...
$10 a month.
$10?
$10 a month.
That's it.
That is it. And their reward back, whatever reward they get. But the reward, the beauty about the reward in this program, is that you're not paying any reward back unless you have the actual sales completed.
What do you mean by that?
In other words, if I don't come and shop at your place, you don't have to give me any reward, obviously. So, we'll take the money from you only after you complete the sale.
So, I sell $1,000 worth of merchandise to the park, I am then obligated to do well for the year?
Well, when you sign up, you tell me what percentage of that you want to give back. Say you give 10% back, then your obligation is $100. But if you don't sell the $1,000, we don't take anything from you, only the $10 a month participation fee.
What is the typical discount?
We've seen restaurants, anywhere, holding costs to them, including the fee, 10% to 15%, net salon can be a 5% to 10%.
So, the merchant gets to pick the discount?
Say it again.
The merchant gets to pick the discount?
Oh, yes.
All right, okay.
Oh, yes, yes. No, we don't, we don't force them.
A slice of pizza is not going to give you necessarily 10%.
Yeah.
But, there is no minimum. My family used to own a business in town, and I remember talking to somebody, I don't want to get into too details, and they wanted a specific percentage for, because we're a restaurant, they looked at the menu, oh, no, you have to give like 20, 25%, something to that effect.
No, no.
So, if a restaurant says 10%?
That's fine. I mean, if a restaurant says 1%, we'll go to them and say, "Look, let's not get carried away here." So, we try to encourage them, do the same thing you would do with your normal coupons, just be fair to the program, because you're, you know, giving a lot of mileage on the program, do not treat us badly, you know, you do 10%, you do 20% with other coupons, do the same thing with us.
Right.
So, will you have any interaction directly with the merchants to sell, to the merchants?
Like I said, we would, we would, I would assign somebody for this town. Over the years, I've spoken to maybe thousands of merchants, and I could get involved as well, but we will assign somebody to this town, and that person, at the beginning, we work with your person to go out and get at least 15 or 20 merchants. We don't start unless we have 15 merchants. We don't spend the time. We do not want to spend the sponsor money unless we have 15 merchants. It's not good for the town, it's not good for us.
Does it have 15?
At least 15, one, five. And then we usually grow. We grow to 25, 30, depending on the town. But, after that initial push, then we sort of step back and be more in a supervisory capacity. But we have customer service in place, people call us, you're not going to get any calls from merchants or from the public. I mean, you might, but then you guys are going to say, "Talk to the administrator."
How does the cardholder get their card, or do they...
Well, there's a couple of ways of doing that. A lot of townships just send them, they mail them, they mail the cards to them, but what happens is, you get a lot of waste. But, and the flip of the coin is that you get an immediate participation of 1,500, 2,000 families all at once. So, you get that critical mass already in place right away. Some other, some other townships that don't want a lot of waste, they try to go to the library, they advertise all over the place that they have the cards, go and pick it up, so they advertise the program, and it's more of a slower growth.
I'm surprised that I have a comment?
Go ahead, virgin.
This appears to be a good program and would help the city and its residents. You have done your homework and inquired from other towns how it worked, and you've received positive results. It sounds like an interesting program, and perhaps the city should give it a try. We must look for ways to improve and also to assist our residents. As again, I would say, nothing ventured, nothing gained. And to the gentleman who made the presentation, thank you for explaining it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. DeFalco, so, before we end, is there any downside to this? To me, like I said, it's a very innovative, creative program. I mean, it looks like you're in a situation where you're highlighting businesses, you could possibly give a tax break to residents, you're having people shop locally, any downside?
The only downside that I can see is, as I said, some townships will do the program for, because they want to be highlighted doing the program, and then perhaps they forget about it. And I've not canceled them, but I could probably cancel two or three of them, I'll be honest with you. So, the reality is, if you decided to go forward, please think about long-term, do not think about the short-term benefits of the program.
Just one more time, the amount of people that we had, how many cards would we need?
If you have about eight thousand households, I would imagine with thirty-one thousand people in town, uh, I would say about thirteen, twelve, thirteen thousand cards. Uh, and about a couple hundred, maybe one hundred is the minimum window clings, which is not a big cost, uh, but...
How much of a fuss?
The, the card is a dollar a piece, so you're talking about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars.
Do you suggest we get a sponsor to buy it? We need, we need a sponsor.
Or multiple sponsors. I have a town that happens to have four sponsors in the back of the car.
And does that also cover the window display?
It's two hundred dollars, we usually can squeeze.
How much?
It's a couple hundred dollars to have two hundred window, one hundred window clings.
Two hundred for one hundred?
Mm-hmm, two dollars a window cling.
This has gotta get marketed to the Chamber of Commerce. Market it to West End Businesses Association, probably the Uptown Association, probably to Jake Jones and... It's definitely how, has to get the businesses on board. Even if they, even if possibly we canvass and see if there is an interest before we...
Yep.
...you know, find someone who commits to twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, whether it's one or several people.
Correct.
Have somebody just hit uh, a segment of the town, see if they would be interested in...
I'll be, I'll be more than happy to lend our services to try and help market this if you think it's a good idea to try and...
Can we use the sponsor?
We might. The firm, the firm idea, unless it turns out to be a conflict of interest or something that I don't see, but we'd be more than happy to participate in, in some way for the town.
Okay, uh, glad we met two years ago. Thank you very much again for coming in and I think it sounds like you should seriously consider. Thanks, Mr. ...
Thank you and thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, uh, next we have uh, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Martin with the surcharge, please.
Go right ahead, Mr. Martin.
No, no, Mr. Hayes. Uh, Mr. Hayes and I would like to present to you a consideration of a surcharge for commodity resales that we're doing with other towns. Currently, we sell gasoline and diesel and rock salt. I say we sell, we, we, we bulk store these assets for other towns that don't have the storage facilities or the capabilities to utilize at their need um, by way of our gas pumps and our salt shit. So we're suggesting we don't charge any premium over our cost. We give them currently the commodity at our cost, what we pay for it. There's no recapture of the cost of dispensing, insurance, maintenance of the property or anything to that effect. So Kevin and I are suggesting a surcharge to cover those costs for the city's end. Um, as you can tell, we have about a hundred and twenty thousand gallons between gasoline and diesel that we sell out every year and I'm suggesting a twenty cent per gallon surcharge, which is still considerably less than these towns would pay at a regular gas station or a pump because taxes aren't assessed on the products that we resell. So we all know the gas tax is at least thirty or forty cents a gallon um, overall between federal and state taxes. So twenty cents a gallon is still a discount from the pump and it would net us close to twenty-four thousand dollars a year for maintenance of our computer system, our gas voice system and um, hopefully save some funds for future improvements like pumps and tanks, structures, things like that.
Well...
The pump or a tank?
We don't know, but...
Pumps a couple thousand bucks.
We're gonna be looking at it because the... No, I know, but I mean, it, it's not like, I don't know how they order it.
It's not like we order a hundred tons of rock salt and they think they're gonna use ten thousand pounds and they pay us for that, no. We stocked a hundred tons and they pull up with a pickup truck and we load it.
Yeah, no, okay, we're doing them a bigger service.
Absolutely.
We're doing them a bigger service, so this is still ahead of the game for them.
I, I think so.
No, I, I, I agree, I agree. Um, when are you planning on, on doing this?
We're just presenting it for discussion right now. We uh, would have, we're gonna restructure the agreements. Uh, I think all the agreements are currently expired. Uh, we wanna get something going before the winter, before rock salt season starts up and gasoline as soon as possible. There's a third component to this, um, the police cars for outside special duty. Uh, currently, there is no admin fee or car fee for the police that go out and go on road jobs and make their own money on overtime, but they take a city car. We're proposing a ten dollar per hour fee for an admin fee to cover our administrative costs and the car fee. Gas.
Fuel, wear and tear in vehicles.
Wear and tear in the vehicles.
We pay, we pay.
Oh, yeah.
We pay, we pay.
Oh, yeah.
So that's if someone is working and they use our car?
We're not, we're not gonna tie it to the car, we're gonna tie it to the per hour rate. We're gonna call it an admin fee and whether they take a car or not, we're still gonna charge an admin fee per hour.
Cover to account and process, so the money's gotta be posted, it'll be tracked. That's gonna be billed to who?
Whoever is utilizing the police officer, it'll be a ten dollar per hour.
The company or the company around you?
Private entity, utility, individual?
On, do, are we gonna hear anything that we're imposing these charge? I don't know, it's twenty cents and twenty dollars a ton. Is this gonna be something we might be hearing, we didn't budget for? Are they gonna find it in their electric account?
I honestly don't think it will. I mean, gas fluctuated thirty cents in the past month and fluctuations are part of the commodity trade.
I'm just, I'm just thinking.
I'm with you and, and you know, sometimes it fluctuates a dollar in a year between January and December. So it's, it's hard to anticipate.
Just wanna make sure that they understand what's going on and... Well, they have the option of not entering into the commodity agreement. They like, they'd like to go to a gas station and buy it themselves. It's still, it's still cheaper and it's a twenty-four hour service.
And gas station prices will fluctuate probably even more than ours.
No, no, no. I'm a hundred percent behind you.
Is there any possibility of losing some of these clients with that increase? And I guess it doesn't matter if we're not making any money on it anyway or not?
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, so what I'm saying, is that, that surcharge per gallon, is that significant enough to make a difference? I mean, if we lost everyone or it still doesn't matter to us?
The infrastructure that they would have to put in place between tanks and pumps on their own within the hundreds of thousands of dollar range. I don't think a twenty cent per gallon charge would be...
We would buy, we'd have to lay out less money for fuel and sell less fuel, yeah.
I, I don't think it would push anybody away, in my opinion.
I think we offer a pretty good service and they've been getting it on our backs for a lot of years and it's catching up to us now. We have to put a capital out there for the uh, for the tanks and the pumps and the computer system.
I agree, so uh, you wanna contest us on that?
I would assume that we would proceed forward with the agreements, if that's what you like.
Michael, go ahead.
I'm good.
I'm good with it. Mary Jane?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so, so what's left is just a review of regular meeting agenda. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary Jane.
On uh, two thirty-eight, uh, regarding the year-round shovel, did someone tell me if almost a university gave some money?
It hasn't been received yet, as far as I'm aware.
They committed to ten thousand dollars, we haven't received it yet, so...
It's been invoiced.
We've sent them an invoice, but it hasn't been paid yet.
Okay, well, we did send them and ask them for money.
Well, they committed to it and we sent them an invoice, just waiting for the payment now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Two, two thirty-three, we discussed just a bit before the meeting started. That is the uh, resolution that Councilman Bastelli called my attention to. I reviewed it and my recommendation to the council is that the resolution can be approved conditioned upon the approval of the business administrator as to warranties for the workmanship and the material that's being provided. It was not clear in the copy that was annexed to the resolution. We just wanna make sure that that is clear and satisfactory to the business administrator who's had prior dealings with this company.
Are we okay with that?
Fine.
Enjoy, thank you for picking that up. Mary Jane?[1755.45]